Good evening. Welcome to the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees meeting dated Wednesday, February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day. Item 1.0, Call to Order. And I want to make a note that trustee Alicia Morales will be joining us remotely. And Karen, can you call the board, please?
Trustee Bradrick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee?
Present.
Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Ellis?
Here.
Trustee Bazinski?
Here.
We have a quorum. Trustee Morales?
Here.
Item 1.0.2, like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight.
Do you have any special guests? Not so. But they'll come up in the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Item 1.03, Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to call on Chris, since he's new with us, that, you know, we're going to put you on the spot early, get it out of the way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the gospel of liberty, justice, and for all.
Item 1.1, Communications. Ms. Keller-Roderick-Tinelli.
Good evening, trustees. Once again, I'm pleased to highlight another amazing partnership and organization and truly individual that we have working with us here at Joliet Junior College. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Katie Leclair, who's the president and chief executive officer of the Greater Joliet YMCA. And it's no secret, I mean, when Katie came into this room, I saw it, she was getting lots of hugs, smiles, high fives. People know her and they know her team. And the breadth and depth of the Y's partnership with the college spans many years and including, most recently, our partnership with the Day of Service, where we sent over 20 employees to the Y to do some volunteer work, as well as Dr. Namua's appointment to the Board of Directors. Katie's here tonight to highlight just a few of those things for you. And frankly, there's just so much, we could probably bring her in every quarter to give an update. There's a lot of great things. So before I call her up to the podium, I want to share something from her official biography on the YMCA website. It says that Katie was first drawn to the YMCA because of the role the organization's mission plays in uniting people of all different backgrounds, experiences, and generations within the community. Makes sense, right? Pretty copacetic. Katie?
Well, thank you so much for your time this evening. As the product of the junior college system, I want to say firsthand, from me to you, thank you all for your incredible commitment to educating our young people. As we think about the work of the Y, it's just incredible to me to think about the parallels that we have with the work that happens here at the college. So when Kelly and Dr. Namua asked me to speak, they shared I have two to three minutes to help share with you the impact of our work together. And as Kelly mentioned, I could go on and on. So I'll just get started. With overlapping service areas and aligned missions, we truly believe that by working together in partnership, we can amplify our impact in the community. At the Y, we often share that through partnership, one plus one can often equal three. So I'd like to take a moment to share with you a brief overview of what we've done just in the last year. And you can see the photos up on the screen that kind of highlight this incredible work. We know that when children experience the wonderful people, places, and programs here at Joliet Junior College, they get to experience their potential to become future Joliet Junior College Wolves. And that's why we've worked collaboratively to create on-campus and community-based experiences for students and their families to experience JJC firsthand. Just this last year, we hosted our first youth basketball clinic in partnership, and I'm proud to say that within three days, we sold out this free event with 100 children enrolled to come here on campus and have a chance to learn from the men's and women's basketball coaches. Quickly after that, we facilitated a coaches clinic, where we invited young leaders from all over the community to come into JJC's campus and to understand what it means to be a coach and to learn about the value of leadership. Some of the more than 1,300 children that are enrolled each and every day in our summer day camp programs have had the blessing of coming on campus to experience field trips through the planetarium and through the STEM lab. For those young people, their horizons were opened when they were able to see the types of jobs, programs, and careers that are available because of the education that they can receive here at Joliet Junior College. We have also hosted two jobs and trades career fairs that brought more than 100 employers and more than 200 students together to identify opportunities for young people to gain certificates, programs, and credentials that would allow them to gain work here in Will County, which we're super excited about. In addition to the on-campus experiences, we've worked really closely to create some community-based experiences for students. A few of those are in the photos as well. So we've had the soccer and baseball teams out visiting more than 10 of the 50 before and after-school childcare sites that we operate in partnership with local school districts. And these folks have gone from Coal City to Plainfield, so they've really covered all of Will and Grundy County with those experiences. And I think one of the benefits of that is that these young athletes, you can see them in the back up there, have had the chance to engage in service. They've shared their personal stories. They've inspired young people to see what they can become if they work hard. And so we're really excited to have those opportunities to share those experiences among students from JJC and the young people enrolled in our YMCA programs. In addition to our on-campus and community experiences, we've worked together to create opportunities for Y staff and board members to experience campus. With more than 50 employees in the full-time capacity and 650 part-time employees across our association, we have found meaningful opportunities to engage our team, which is an incredibly high priority for us. Through our work together, we've been able to expand our team's knowledge and skills for creating inclusive, welcoming spaces through trainings that were hosted right here at JJC. Just last week, we facilitated a three-hour training for our full-time staff to learn how to lean into our natural gifts. We call it our working genuses, and that was right here in the U building on campus. We know that lasting personal and social change comes when we all work together, and that's why at the Y, strengthening community is truly our cause. Every day, we work side by side with our neighbors, like JJC, to ensure that everyone, regardless of age, income, or background, have the opportunity to thrive. And as I've shared, our Y story now includes each and every one of you. So on behalf of the Y, thank you for your incredible partnership, and thank you for your incredible leadership on behalf of learners of all ages across our communities. We really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes?
Sorry. Did you practice saying that in two to three minutes?
I did. I was making sure I was under three minutes. I know you have a lot going on.
Thank you for being conscious of our time.
Yes.
Don't feel so much pressure next time.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Item 1.2, 1.2.1, Women's History Month Proclamation. Dean Bob Morris.
Good evening, Chairman Bazinski, trustees of the board, members of the JJC community. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you JJC student, Ms. Emily Powers, to read this evening's proclamation. Emily is diligently pursuing her academic journey with the aim of attaining an associate in science, associate in arts, a degree in environmental horticulture, and a greenhouse operations certificate of completion. Upon achieving these milestones, she intends to transfer to a four-year institution to further her education. Since 2019, Emily has been an engaged member of the JJC community. She actively participates in various clubs and student organizations, such as the InterVarsity Christian Fellowship, the Psychology Club, the Science Club, Active Minds, Student Government, and the Campus Sustainability Union. Currently, she holds the position of Vice President of Reach for Phi Theta Kappa and serves as co-president of the art club and contributes as an active member of the Office of Sustainability. Emily's involvement extends beyond clubs. She has previously worked as a student in the ceramic studio in the Fine Arts Department and currently serves as a student worker for the Agriculture and Horticulture Departments, both at Whiten Dorf and in the campus greenhouse. In collaboration with Phi Theta Kappa, Emily has had the opportunity to lead and design the Pollinator Garden, which was later installed on campus as part of their college project. On a personal note, Emily nurtures a passion for wildlife conservation and restoration. As a summer hobby, she raises monarchs and black swallow-tailed butterflies, showcasing her commitment to environmental sustainability and biodiversity. So once again, it is my pleasure to introduce to you JJC student, Ms. Emily Powers.
Great. I don't know how to begin, but thank you so much for the introduction, and I'm going to go ahead and get into it. The proclamation for Women's History Month 2024. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation and community in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation and constitute a significant portion of the labor force inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation and community. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, and the industrial labor movements, the civil rights movement, and other social and political movements. And whereas American women deserve all the rights, privileges, and acknowledgements afforded to all human beings in our society, and now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kenkekee, Livingston, and Cook, and the State of Illinois hereby recognize and salute the women of our nation and community and designate the month of March as Women's History Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525, adopted this 14th day of February 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Emily. Item 1.3, Chair's Request for a Closed Session for Discussion Under 2C-1 Personnel, 2C-11 Legal, 2C-2 Union Negotiations, 2C-11 Board Self-Devaluation.
2C-16.
2C-16?
Yep.
So moved. Second.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome back. I need a motion to return to public session.
So moved.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome back. I need a motion to return to public session.
So moved.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.5, Public Comments. Karen, do we have any public comments tonight?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Item 1.6, Moment of Silence. Dr. Namua.
Chairman Bazinski and trustees of the board and members of the JJC community, thank you today. I'm asking the college community to join me in a moment of silence for Lillian Correlco, wife of Lou Correlco, former JJC Chief of Security; John Shea, father-in-law of Tressa Shea, Assistant Professor of Health and Public Services; and finally, chairman and trustees, as you know, it has been an important custom in our monthly meetings to acknowledge those who have passed away within our college community. And to honor the lives in a collective moment of silence, tonight, we will continue this practice and pay our respects to the seven victims killed on January 1st. In our own community, here in Joliet, this senseless loss of life and the impact of that loss cannot be ignored. Two of those individuals, Alexandria, or Alex, and Joshua Nance, were at one time JJC students. The painful and lasting effects on their families, their friends, and others close to them is undoubtedly immense. So Chairman, I ask you now to join me and college community in a moment of remembrance.
Item 1.7, Selected Reports. 1.7.1, State of Illinois Legislative Update.
Good evening again, trustees. You know, as you know, and we talk about in this room often, we've got a pretty comprehensive federal advocacy agenda, as well as a robust state agenda. And as we've done in the past, we'd like to bring Julie Currie, the college's lobbyist, to come and share updates with you, particularly when we come into the very active spring session. And so, you know, we had a successful federal advocacy trip in Washington, D.C. last week. I'm sure we'll talk about that later. But I just have to say that Julie and her team in Springfield have been incredible advocates and partners to the college for 10 years, helping us secure financial support for key projects and initiatives at the college, the most substantial, ensuring the college received $28 million to support the construction of the city center campus in 2017. We're also working with Julie in a preliminary way, but working with Julie in alignment with Dr. Namua's vision to maximize the state funding strategy for the Grundy County expansion. And before I invite Julie up to the podium, I just want to say, because I don't think we've really talked about this here in this room, is that for the first time ever, the State of Illinois has a community college caucus, and this is made up of over 60 state representatives and senators who are working together with us as a statewide system of 48 community colleges to advance mutual goals. And that's a really big deal. So we're excited, for the first time, to work with them to advance our agenda. So with that, I will turn the mic over to Julie.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I want to be respectful of your time tonight, but I thought it was appropriate to come, you know, the beginning of the new year and talk about what you can expect in Springfield over the next few months. I'd like to tell you that they've been doing a lot of work over the last month and a half, but the legislature has only been in session for five days. And we go back next week on the 20th, and the governor will give a combined State of the State and budget address on the 21st. Those addresses used to be separate, but over the years, probably the last, probably eight years or so, last few governors, they've combined the two addresses, which kind of makes sense. So the legislature returns next week. They have been introducing bills like crazy. By the end of last week, February 9th was the deadline to introduce bills in the House and the Senate. We are up to over 9,000 bills for this General Assembly. But to put that in perspective, because I don't want you to think that we're really dealing with 9,000 bills in one year or in a two-year period, last year, only 300 and about 320 bills became law. So we will go through a process of reading every single bill, which I'm doing right now, and the, you're laughing. That's the way I feel sometimes, too. And then those bills will start to get assigned to committee by the legislative leaders. So we will have a very busy schedule beginning in March, but really, kind of what's controlling things right now is the March 19th primary. And so you'll see the General Assembly return to Springfield this week, but there won't be a lot of committee hearings until really the first part of March. But what's interesting is the schedule that the legislative leaders have set. So if you want to look at it like this, in March, the Illinois Senate, the members of the Illinois Senate will have approximately eight days to get their bills out of committee. So they have to get assigned to committee, and then they have to do the work of getting them out. So the timeframe is real tight. The House has a few more days, 13 days, 13 session days. So it's still tight, but they do that on purpose. So the governor's up next week, he's going to give his budget address. We've been lucky enough, over the last five years, to have balanced budgets, to have budget surpluses, which have been great, to have nine credit rating increases, which is awesome, to be putting money into the Rainy Day Fund, which the state has not done in a very long time, so there's over $2 billion in that fund and required by law to put money in that fund every year. You know, the governor's been investing in broadband expansion through federal and state dollars, through the electric vehicle program and electrification. They've made huge investments in early childhood education, childcare, the teacher pipeline, and higher education. We've seen historic amounts of money get put into the Monetary Assistance Grant Program, which obviously helps our students here at JJC. You've seen record number of amount of money go into community colleges throughout the state. And so the governor's made higher education a priority. I think it's important, I mean, and obviously, putting money into the dual credit program, which obviously JJC has a premier program here, has been something that's driven enrollment up in community colleges in Illinois by 5%. So that's an awesome thing. But I kind of want to set the tone of what is going to happen with the budget address. Like I said earlier, we've had budget surpluses, and we'll probably end this fiscal year with a budget surplus, even though we're going to have to go back to the General Assembly and ask for a supplemental increase in the current fiscal year budget. And that has more to do with the additional cost to provide health care, housing, and other supportive services to asylum seekers. And on top of that, there's other budget pressures that have come with other health care needs for our state employee group, health insurance. All of these things are going to be taken into account when we start our new budget for FY '25. And I can tell you right now, we're looking at probably a billion-dollar shortfall in FY '25. So I think what you're going to see is that the governor is going to present a flat budget for FY '25, and, but there'll still be a commitment to education, early childhood, higher education. It's just going to be a tougher year. I will say, though, that their predictions, their revenue estimates, over the last five years, the administration has been very conservative in those estimates. So we've always had, you know, been lucky enough to have additional money at the end. But lawmakers are going to have to take a hard look at existing programs and new programs that they've created and set some priorities. And again, you know, the immigrant health care costs are going to be a big player in this process. It's costing the state about $1.2 billion in the current fiscal year. They have put in some protocols and some requirements with co-pays and other items that will help drive down those costs, but we have other pressures within the budget besides that. So that's kind of where we're at. I could go on more and talk about other things, but it's going to be a challenge in 2025. The legislature is scheduled to adjourn right at the end of May, possibly around Memorial Day weekend, so we'll see if that happens. But, you know, the Democrats control the majority in both chambers, the supermajority, so they ought to be able to pass a budget and leave Springfield on time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Harris, do you have any comments?
I don't. Thank you for your work.
Oh, thank you.
Trustee Lee?
Thank you for reading all those bills.
Sometimes I have to read them twice.
Trustee Bradrick?
No, Julia, do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Thank you for providing an overview of everything that we have working for this session. Thank you.
Trustee Mahalik?
Nothing here. Thanks for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Trustee Alicia Ellis?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Trustee Morales?
No comment. Thank you so much, Julia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Item 1.7.2, The ERP Implementation Update. Dr. Yolanda Farmer.
Hey, once again, good evening. Good evening. So once again, good evening, Chairman Bazinski, trustee of the board, JJC community. I have the pleasure today to provide an update regarding our ERP restart. And I just want to stress today, once again, board members, I want to take a moment just again to thank you for your advocacy and your support. I wanted to highlight throughout this time with the ERP restart, you have approved a lot of support for us, and so I just want to take a moment just to thank you for that. Whenever we provide an update, it's really important to stress the guiding principles as we move forward with this project. We made a commitment to the board that we will continue to be open, transparent. That's important. Also, we will continue to honor the voices of everyone that's involved in the project, but most importantly, honor the voices of those who are closest to the project. We will continue to leverage our talent and also face our challenges with confidence. Because with any ERP restart, implementation, or implementations, plural, you will have challenges. But of course, we want to make sure that our college community feels supported so they can move forward with a lot of confidence with this project. So just in terms of the Workday optimization timeline, we have accomplished a lot in a short period of time of implementation. I just want to stress to all the board members today that, you know, we're already live with Workday, just as a reminder. So we're seeking to really optimize what we have. We want to scale it up. So today, we've accomplished a lot, but most importantly, right now, many of our JJC employees have been reviewing features and also looking at some of the latest Workday release, which will go live in March. So I just wanted to share that with you today. And then also, in terms of our colleague SAS, once again, I just want to remind the board that this is somewhat of a fluid timeline. You know, we continue to work on scaling up our staff and talent of individuals to help us move forward this process. But again, we are in the initiation and also the readiness stage. So we're doing a lot of conversations with our project managers regarding being ready for this project. So also, the next step would be really cleaning up the data as well, because remember, we've been in colleagues for over 34 years. So just want to stress that today. So moving forward, board, I will share at least one big win regarding the implementation. I don't know if you know this or not, but IT did really a good job. At this time, we are successfully implementing a single sign-on process. Just think about when you're on your bank, you know, and you have that one single sign-on, right, versus multiple sign-ons. So it's been very productive. It improves our user, improve our users' experience. It's increased our productivity, but most importantly, it has enhanced our security in terms of data. Really a very important win. And then another one I want to highlight tonight, most of you know this already, but we've implemented our project governance structure. It is in place. I want to stress that again, it's in place. And we've held many meetings so far, so we are trying to use a holistic approach, and we want to make sure that we have all of our staff members who are closest to the project really involved in the process. So board members, as we mentioned before, it's really important to be transparent, to be open regarding some of our challenges. So today, I just want to highlight three opportunities that we really need to pay close attention to that will require a little bit more time, energy, and focus. I mentioned this at my last update, human capital, the resources. It's really important that we continue to provide ongoing support for the staff, provide contractors that will provide ongoing support for the staff, but most importantly, we want to make sure that we have individuals who are trained, who have expertise in ERPs. Change management, huge. This is a change for the college, so of course, we will continue to invest in change management, providing ongoing support for our staff in that area as well. And then data governance. As I mentioned before, we've been utilizing colleague for over 30-plus years, so we want to make sure we have a good data governance in place to really manage that data. So we're almost there. So one thing about the ERP is that we know it's a heavy lift. So one thing about the ERP is that we know it's a heavy lift. It's a heavy lift for the college community, and it's very serious business for us. But one thing, as the executive sponsor, that I would like to start doing is really infusing, once again, some of the core values that we have at the college. And the one core value that I want to highlight today is humor and well-being. You know, there's an opportunity for us to really take a moment to celebrate some of our accomplishments, but then also laugh at some of the potential mistakes, you know, right? In fact, one of the PMs indicated it would be nice, when we have a communication out to the college community, we should put some together, put a piece together that highlights information about what you should know about the ERP start, ERP implementation, what you should share and what you should do. And so one of the recommendations they sent is like, hey, maybe you should have your little puppies, hold your dogs, and have a video that talks about what you should know today about the ERP, what you should share and what you should do as a college community. So it's something unique and an opportunity for us to really highlight the good work that we're doing. So we've already mentioned this, we had a very successful ERP restart summit. It was an opportunity to bring some of our college leaders together. When I'm looking at some of them here who was present, then most importantly, our chairman was also present, present for this ERP summit. But it was an opportunity for us to really look at some of the opportunities and some of the challenges as we move forward. During that meeting, we made some recommendations, and as we finalize those recommendations, especially with the board and also with the college community, we will start communicating some of that out. But we're working on formalizing some of those outcomes from the ERP summit, so that information will be forthcoming to the college community. So at this time, I want to entertain any questions that you may have today.
Trustee Harris?
No, don't have any questions. Just thank you for the dedication and look forward to total process.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Lee?
I live by, laugh better to laugh than cry, so I liked your humor comment.
Thank you.
Trustee Broderick?
Thank you, Dr. Furman. Good report.
Thank you.
Trustee Morales?
No questions, no comments. Thank you, Dr. Furman.
Sorry, you took the screen. Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Mahalik?
Thank you for your hard work, and thank you for the teams, and thanks for the college community for being part of this too as well.
Absolutely.
Trustee Ellis?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Furman. Item 1.7.3, the Faculty Union Report. Dr. Bob Marcinck. So I know back in the old days, I could have just given you a pager and let you know when we were coming back and could have saved you an hour out of your day each Wednesday, but thank you for sitting and waiting for us.
Well, I actually left, so. Had somebody, we, we had somebody text me, although it wasn't necessary. I came back in time. So as always, Chairman Bazinski, President Namor, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Our student Emily has left. It's just a shame she can't find a little more time to get involved in campus activities. But she did bring up a very important, it was nice to hear her, her reading of Women's History Month. As we know, women throughout our history have not often, not always gotten credit for the work that they have done. And it's time that we recognize that. We have not always, we have not always been, we have been somewhat patriarchal in the past. And so it's great to see that, that she was able to read that and also tell us how many things that she's involved with, because I have a feeling she's going to be a significant leader as we go forward. So a couple of other things, let's see. Well, the main, the main thing I actually want to talk about briefly is tenure. I know that's, I know there's some of that is on your agenda this evening, and I just want to talk briefly about the process. And when I promise not to bore you, I can only tell you that the process has gotten more difficult over time than when I first started here. Well, no, right af, right, right before I started here, it got really tough. That's what I, no. About 30 years ago or so, it wasn't quite as tough. I mean, and that's just a fact. But today, there are numerous, numerous things that new faculty, not only to get tenure, but also to get, to move on to another year, have to do and get through. They have evaluations by mentors, evaluations by their chairs, evaluations by their deans, evaluations by their students. They have to do reports. They have to be involved in the college community beyond their classroom. And if they do all of these things, they're going to be in good standing. And if they don't, they may be good people, but they may not be the right people. And I think what we've done over the past 20 or so years is we've, I think, built a stronger process, one that brings in the right people, keeps the right people. Because if you make, if you make mistakes in that area, the fact is, is that you have to live with them for a long time. And nobody wants to do that. And so I'm really, I want everybody to understand that the people who are being recommended for tenure, they have been vetted, vetted strongly throughout the institution. So, and hopefully, they will be approved, and I'll be able to congratulate them, and we'll have some excellent new, not new colleagues, but colleagues that we know are going to be around for a while. So that said, does anybody, I never ask that. I always leave, and then I never ask for questions. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Trustee Harris?
No questions. Thank you.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Broderick?
No, thank you.
No.
Trustee Morales?
No, thank you.
Trustee Mahalik?
Just how are you doing? I haven't, I only see you once a month. We don't catch up.
I know. Well, I'm doing just fine, but, you know, we talked about it a little bit later.
Trustee Ellis?
No, thank you.
Ayesha.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you.
Item 1.7.4, the Adjunct Faculty Union Report. Ms. Laurel Deesgall. Again, I thank you two for sitting and waiting for us for hours each time you come here on a Wednesday night, so.
Well, thank you. I actually went and did some work, too.
You shouldn't tell us that. You should say you sat there patiently and.
Well, it is patient, but, you know, it's still work. Anyway, good evening. Nice to see you again. I will be brief. One, one thing I do want to mention, though, is each semester, we get a list of adjunct faculty that are teaching that semester. We got the list for this semester, and we have about 300 adjuncts, adjunct faculty members teaching over 500 sections this semester. And it just kind of, every time I look at these numbers, I think about the contribution that adjunct faculty make to the, to the students here, to the community, and to the institution. And so it just kind of reinforces our commitment and our dedication to the organization and the students here. Other than that, I really, I don't have anything else of magnitude to say. I will not be here next month because it is during spring break, and I will not be in town. So I will look forward to seeing you in April. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the board having any questions?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 1.7.5, the Building and Grounds Committee Report.
It's a quick one. There was no B&amp;G meeting this month, so.
Thank you, sir. Item 1.7.6, the Board Policy Committee Report.
Okay, so for, up for first read this evening, we have 4.1.1, the Exposure Control Plan, which states that we have an exposure control plan to eliminate or minimize exposure to bloodborne pathogens. The state code was changed and updated to stay in line with policies, to stay in line with the law. It changed. Other than that, there were no changes to that policy. Next, you will see two versions of the same policy. The 4.1.2A, I am supporting. 4.1.2B, trustee Garcia-Guian is supporting. I am supporting 4.2, or 4.1.2A, the first policy, which states that the sale and disposal of college property, property will not, property not needed for college purposes shall be subject to approval by the board, and the board shall be provided with complete information concerning the methods to be used in sale or disposal. 4.1.2B changes this and states that the board authorizes the VP of Finance and Admin Services on its behalf to sell and dispose of college property not needed. In our policy committee meeting, Karen Kissel and Garcia-Gran agreed that we, that that is more of an oversight, and they, and Garcia-Guian feels that that is more opera, getting into operations. I wholeheartedly disagree. We are elected to oversee the fiscal responsibility of the college. The reason this is a policy is because under Illinois law, as the board, there is supposed to be a seven-person vote on any financial decision. That is why the new policy states we are authorizing the VP of Finance to make this decision on our behalf. This is our responsibility as elected officials. I feel I would be dishonoring my constituents, voters' rights, and confidence by giving up a responsibility they elected us to oversee. The second way the policy has changed is in the methods of disposal. In 4.1.2A, the authority lies with the Senior Director of Business and Auxiliary Services. 4.1, to determine whether or not the property is no longer needed. 4.1.2B changes this and places the authority with the VP of Finance Services. Matt is currently our Senior Director of Business and Auxiliary Services. He is a tenured and experienced. He is familiar with all third-party contracts and intimately knows the details of all the equipment and building and grounds. I have full confidence in him to determine whether the property, whether the college property is damaged or no longer needed for college purposes. I believe to transfer this responsibility to someone with less knowledge would be dire election of duty, an irresponsible decision on the board's behalf. Did you want to say anything of you support, why you're?
So I don't want to stop you, but I really like to, where we get to the new business as part of the agenda.
We can go ahead and do that.
And open it up for discussion at that time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problems. That concludes my policy committee report on the ones that are on the agenda. I actually, we, I'm going to pass out something that we talked about. We had a policy meeting, and in that policy meeting, I asked for a request of information. And I received an email telling me I needed to put that request into writing. And I was a little bit irritated because I had completely, did not realize, and I just want to make sure that everyone here understands what, how, when we just changed this policy, what we did, okay? Just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because I didn't realize it affected committee meetings, okay? So I just want to make sure we're on the same page. I wrote a few notes. Let me get to them really quick. Before you, it was an email between myself and Karen Kissel regarding our policy meeting. In the meeting, I requested information. Due to the recent changes in policy for board requests for information, I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware what we voted on, because I myself did not realize the extra work we created for ourselves until now. I've been on the policy committee since its creation. Tracy Morris alerted me to be very careful on how I write policy in regards to holding trustees accountable for their behavior. We recently changed board policy, the board policy, board information request to be in a written email to the president and chair due to unreasonable excessive request of information from one trustee. I just want to make sure everyone is aware, we now have to request all information in writing. Even if we verbally request information in a board meeting or a committee meeting, all of the cabinet, and that member of that committee meeting, that cabinet member agrees to give you the information, we still have to send a written request, which I didn't realize. And so I'm sorry for being short with you, by the way. Anyways, before, so I just want us as the board to understand, and I want everyone, all of the cabinet members and people in this community, to understand that we, the board as a whole, understand unreasonable excessive requests for information can be time-consuming and take away from the important duties specific to your position. And I would just like to note that we changed that policy to, and took on that extra work so that in an effort to show you support, and in an effort to show that we have confidence in you, and the president and his cabinet. And again, I'm sorry for being short because of my email. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we changed that policy and what that meant for us. Thank you. And now I'm finished.
And again, if there's any discussion on that, we'll do it in the business, but we'll move on.
Okay.
And that's it for your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 1.7.7, the Finance Committee Report.
We presented our report at the workshop. It, I believe it's a public record now, so if anyone wants to see it, I'm sure we can view it. So that's my report.
Thank you. Item 1.7.8, the President's Report. Dr. Namor.
Chairman and trustees, thank you. Members of the JJC community, I'll go through these. So first, I wanted to just take a moment to thank Congressman Darren LaHood for spending some time with us, actually, a couple, a few hours with us, going through our spaces, learning about JJC. You see, we are new to Congressman LaHood, and he is new to us due to redistricting. He has in his district all of Grundy County. So I thought it was important for us to honor his interest in JJC. And as you can see from the pictures, I want to thank Chairman for being there as well and having a conversation, and they bonded over their love of soccer, of soccer. I did kind of get back to my faculty roots, and I wasn't sure what I was committing to. I thought I was committing to just, you know, photo op and maybe 15 to 20 minutes of a lecture titled "The Evolution of Malware." 2.5 hours later, I would argue that our students learned a lot from the president as he revisited his cybersecurity faculty roots. So I just also did it, you know, to highlight an emerging, growing program housed at our Romeoville campus. And at last numbers behind all of our transfer students in terms of numbers, when you consider programs, it's nursing, it's culinary, just the numbers, strictly the numbers, nursing, culinary, and actually cybersecurity. So want to send some thanks to Stan Piklow there. And if you're, you get your hands on this, the slide in the upper left-hand corner, don't zoom in on the students' faces, only half of them are smiling. I only noticed that later. Want to acknowledge CMOS and the leadership in CMOS, DeAndre, and I think you'll hear and see more of this in trustee Ellis's report. She had some time at, excuse me, she had some time at the podium to talk about the significance of the Black History Month flag, which is flying. Thank you again to the board of trustees for their support. You see Michael Allen there in front, leading the, holding the flag and kind of leading the parade. He's a member of our men's basketball team, and I just wanted to highlight him as well. Again, you'll hear more about it from trustee Ellis. I wanted to take a moment to thank Chancellor Lane for his partnership. Many of you saw this on social media and celebrated it. I think indeed it is something to be celebrated. Initially, I thought it would just be another articulation agreement signing, but in learning of Chancellor Lane's vision, and really the value that SIU Carbondale places on community colleges across the state, just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge him and Diane Urbansik and Stephanie Brown that you see with me there for joining. Urbansik and Stephanie Brown that you see with me there for joining me to celebrate the official signing of the Saluki Step Ahead Agreement with JJC on February 1st, which allocates significant resources for students interested in transitioning to SIU Carbondale. I don't want to steal the trustee's thunder too much, because I believe Trustee Lee has more to say about this, and Trustee Ellis does as well, but it was just another great trip of advocacy to Washington DC. We're in front of the White House there, we're in front of the Kennedy Room, and in front of the Capitol, doing the good work and spreading the word of JJC and all that we do to maximize the support that we get from the federal government. And just want to say that it was Trustee Lee's and Trustee Ellis's first time there. I thought they did a great job, so hopefully they'll provide more context in their remarks. I wanted to finish by acknowledging campus police. Now, many of you know the JJC Foundation is just a thriving apparatus that brings in millions of dollars to support our student, each, our students. Each year, the foundation awards nearly a million dollars in scholarships. Well, we all know that, right? Campus police, however, do their own set of fundraising, so allow me to share just some details. Each year, under Chief Campbell's leadership, the campus police participate in the Illinois Special Olympics torch run, the plane pull, and the polar plunge, where all proceeds from their fundraising efforts go to benefit Special Olympics. Now, that's to be commended, but we are the top university/collage police department in the entire state of Illinois in fundraising. Of all two-year, four-year police departments, we raised the most in the entire state. So applause for applause. And you'll see in the middle there, Officer Reed alone surpassed $7,000 in fundraising alone, which is why he is front and center on my slide here. And lastly, before I yield back, Chairman, rumors of the President participating in the polar plunge are greatly exaggerated. And with that, I'll yield back.
I wanted to see you pull the airplane.
That, that I'm willing to do, just not the polar plunge. Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Okay.
I think you'd be great at.
Thank you, Trustee Mahalik. Thank you.
Item 1.8, 1.8.1, approval in minutes for the regular meeting held on January 17th, 2024. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. And a roll call vote.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.9, the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And the roll, please.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.10, approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to pull 3.1.
Any other items to be pulled?
Uh-uh.
And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Back to item 3.1, approval to pay the listing of bills for the period ending January 17th, 2024 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
If either the Chair or our counsel would, I had talked to them about my concern on the change of everything. Could you just share, both of you, my concerns that I had voiced to both of you in regards to the change of the revolving, and what is that now, and the procedure? Because one of my things that I concerned, was concerned, and I know that counsel didn't know the answer to it, I don't think you do either, Chair. When we have something, and I'll use this as an example, Google, where we have over $12,000 showing with individual statements, but it's $12,000 for Google, that doesn't show on the rear, on these, this page that we're seeing. How are we to know if we have something that's, all these invoices that are going to one vendor, going to show on this, or is it just going to stay reoccurring? I'm trying to understand the revolution of what we've changed it to and how it was changed.
Do you want to address that?
Sure. When I first came on the board, or was first retained by the board, I got a board book, and I was shocked at how thick that thing was. It's hundreds of pages. And asked, why is this so thick? And flipping through it, it became obvious it had to do with the approval of the bills. And I think I had made mention of the fact that I can't believe that, you know, the board is approving bills for, you know, $2 or $18 or something like that. And found it somewhat unusual, and somebody, it may have been President Namuwa, somebody said, hey, you know, I think it's DuPage. They limit board review to $25,000 and above contracts or items expenditures of that amount. And, you know, I decided to look into it. And when I looked into it, the state statute allows this board to establish a revolving fund, and the purpose for that is to pay bills that come up more frequently. For example, the board meets once a month, the bill might be due before the board meets. So to have that paid, you can establish a revolving fund. But lo and behold, your policies have a revolving fund in them. And those policies set up that amounts greater than $5,000 need not be approved by the board on a regular basis. So in looking at that and comparing it with the board book that is provided to the trustees, the practice wasn't following the policy. And I spoke to the Chairman about that, and he, I think, he engaged Dr. Namuwa on it. There were, there was a discussion had with Trustee Mahalik and Trustee Ellis as the representatives of the Finance Committee went through.
Trustee Morales.
Trustee Morales.
I'm sorry, Trustee Mahalik, Trustee Morales. I apologize.
No problem.
About that, and.
About that. About that. Sorry, I don't like hearing my own voice.
And they were in agreement with it. I think the, the purpose behind the change, it's not a change in policy, I think it's a change in practice, and it's a practice that follows the policy that this board has put in place. If there is a dissatisfaction with that, I think the policy can be changed. But if you look at the policy, and I forget the policy number, but there's a board policy on finance, and it tells you exactly what doesn't need to be approved by this board. The state statute that allows you to put in, put that revolving fund into place also provides that the expenditures from the revolving fund are to be reported to this board on a monthly basis, and that is being adhered to under the state statute. All of the trustees should have received those in a separate communication. So, you know, when I look at the size of a board book that thick, I feel bad for the trees.
No, I agree. And I think I mentioned my concern of how it came to us. Can you two share that? Jim? How it came as far as us finding it now? Should it not have gone, because I, I don't know who this woman is, the Susan, is her name Susan Goze? The one that wrote this, or Kathy Suns? Who's Kathy Suns?
Oh, Kathy Suns is an attorney at my office. I asked her to put together that memo. She's the one who researched, did the legal, statutory research.
So Kathy Suns was.
Yes.
And that came to you in January, correct?
I believe so.
I thought, yeah. So I guess my question was, and I had asked the Chair and Counsel, should it not have gone before Finance, and Finance then brought it to us to then know about it, and not just all of a sudden have the change? And that's what I'm asking the policy to look at then, to see if we have any type of announcements that come, that we should be at least brought to our attention before the change happens, just so we can see and know what's going on. And that's all I'm drawing, and I'm done then. Thank you.
So one of the things Brian is looking at, I'm sorry, Attorney Copman is looking at a lot of things we do, making sure we're adhering to policies. Everything from our Openset Meetings Act and our policy committees and everything else. As he finds things that we're not doing appropriately or by definition, I'm not sure we're going to bring every one of those back to the board to show a change.
No, but something significant is this, that has been always the history of seeing it, when all of a sudden you go from a book like this to a book like that. I mean, I have no problem with the change, don't get me wrong. I'm just asking if procedurally, Finance could have said, hey, this is what's going on, and then we would have been aware of it, you know, instead of all of a sudden, you know. I, I think the trustees should, should know and be able to discuss it. And that's where I'm coming from for procedural policy.
Well, I think the Finance Committee determined based on what Brian, but, you know, I apologize, I should have brought that back to you, and that's my fault, but it was in the policy that this, this is, this is the way that it should be handled, so nothing to be changed in the policy. But that's my fault, you know? I forgot. I apologize. I don't want to make mistakes.
I apologize too. It was briefly mentioned in the policy committee that, hey, we changed the way that the board book is set up with Finance due to, to adhere with policy, and so I actually forgot about that and didn't say.
No, and I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm just giving you sensitivity to what I was looking at, because for all the years I've been here, I've seen the thick board book, you know? And I mean, I understand what we're doing with the reoccurring, I have no problem with that. I just thought maybe if we had known, you know, in that procedural way.
Yeah, it's my fault, I should have brought up in my report, but, you know, I forgot.
No worries.
My muscles are going to take a hit, because I can't lift that board book up like that 20 times.
And so that information is still emailed to us on a monthly basis? It's just no longer in the board?
Board book, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
And I don't want to miss your first question, in it you, we're looking at it.
Yeah, but they.
Coming out of banking worrying, and I have to be, for our careers, have to be very, very sensitive for structuring deposits, hiding spending by breaking them into smaller amounts to get past regulations, things like that. So I think she started to ask the question on that, so I will write a letter to Dr. Muwa asking for us to have another review on how bills are paid and how the approval process is. And we can revisit that, but.
I appreciate that.
I understand what you're looking at, because, you know, structuring is, we go to jail for that, so.
Well, and it's just like in banking, like you said, somebody can bring in $990, and we're supposed to report anything over $10,000. And if we don't, there's still that small little gap that we can say discretionary, we should, you know? And that's why I'm just saying, we live in very compliant worlds.
Yes.
So thank you all.
Yes.
We still need to approve 3.1.
Do we need a vote on that still?
Yes. Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 3.5, the Board of Trustees' approval of no increase in tuition rates and fees for fall of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
A big yes for me.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4 under New Business and Old Business, we're back to the first reading of board policies, and I cut off discussion earlier. If you'd like to reintroduce this and allow them for discussion?
All right, so 4.1.2A is the policy I am supporting. 4.1.2B is the policy that Garcia-Gian is supporting, and so I would like her to be able to speak now.
Yes, thank you. You were able to explain 4.12A, recall what Trustee Lee mentioned about the policy. I'll focus on 4.12B. Trustee Lee already mentioned a little bit of that information, but I'll go ahead and explain it in my own words. What we're trying to obtain from the board is direction. Depending on what policy you support, it could be either or, or there's a third option that it could be a combination of, depending on your guidance, and that, then we'll go ahead and take the policy back to the committee and make the necessary modifications depending on your instructions. So, policy 13.04.00 that on your board packet book is 4.1.2B. This one focuses on providing authorization to the Vice President of Finance and Administrative Services, or the Vice President Designee, to be able to determine if a particular property of the college can be sold or be issued for disposal. What this policy changes is that we are allowing the board to be informed, but the board is not making the final decision on what items are actually being subject to the selling or disposing. For this particular policy, the board would receive a report annually in order to be informed of the items that were sold or disposed for that particular year. This one also breaks down a little bit of the definition of what are some of the items that could be disposed of, and what are some of the limitations. So it provides a lot of information that it could be for any of the following in district public schools, not-for-profit, community-based organizations, and any items that are on claim would be disposed appropriately depending on what type of item it is. So for this particular policy, it takes the board, the board away from the day-to-day operations and actually makes us focus on policy versus day-to-day operations. So that's the policy that you have in front of you, 4.1.2B. Thank you. And now we can go ahead and open it up for thoughts or discussion.
Trustee Harris, do you have any questions regarding these two policies or discussion?
Well, I just wonder in terms of how it was done before, was there problems with 4B?
You mean 4A? The original policy is the 4A.
Well, the original was 4A, okay. So I guess the, yeah, problems with 4A, original.
Have you ever had any, you've been on the board the longest, have you ever had any problems with approving or not approving sale and disposal of college property?
Yeah, we did, and that was with the Renaissance Center stuff. We had problems with not having a good inventory control, and some stuff was, we found out that employees had had given like laptops or computers to their kids, stuff of that nature. So, yeah, I do have a concern about this whole thing, because that blew up on things that were missing that we were aware of, and we did a forensic audit because of that. So you guys should be aware of that, because my concern issues are dual control, removal of asset from an asset list, knowing what the asset list is, and actual knowledge of what the asset list is and passed by two people. So I'm looking at both sides of it.
Yes, so this is also, the board, it's going through a lot of people with the first, there has seven eyes on it, eight with the student trustee, the President. When it comes across the board, there are a lot more eyes on it. This, literally, the second policy is putting all of the control into one person's hands, and that is the VP of Finance Services for both aspects of the methods of disposal as well as what, deeming whether or not it is.
Yeah, I think if you look at the forensic audit, you'll find the things that we found that were problems during that. So I agree with you on that, because I think there needs to be dual control procedures in place to guarantee that we don't have that happen again, where there's missing things or things, because when things came in for repair, all of a sudden they were found that somebody else had it, it was one of the kids of the employees. So, I mean, that does raise a level, high-level concern. And I know that our VP of Finance at one point was aware of it after we, and Dr. Mitchell had requested to do the forensic audit.
Trustee Mahalik?
Well, I hate to say it, not hate to say it, but I do agree with Michelle on this one. I think there's better to have more eyes on it than just one set of eyes on it, so. Not saying anything bad about Matt, but I'm just saying it's a little better for us, so.
Trustee Harris, Ellis?
So my question is, won't the Board still be able to see everything? Because it says that the Board should be provided with information concerning.
The concern is that it's after the fact. So I'm going to summarize this and you guys tell me if I'm correct. But we're asking this, both of these policies to return to the Policy Committee, retaining the Board authority for the decision, but combining some of the definition and the other work. Both policies have something in it that the other one doesn't. Combine them into one policy, but the authority stays the same on the decision.
What do you say that is in the first one that's not in the second one?
I mentioned dual control.
Well, you, yeah, so she has, she's going to send that in an email for what she thinks the three notes that you mentioned. But, well, not to me, to the Chair and to the President. And then they'll get it to the Policy Committee from my understanding of how that went. What is in, so this says, what I, I don't like the second one at all. I mean, if you sit here and read it, what do you like about it? Because personal property owned or leased by JJC? And then they, so it was just property owned or leased by JJC. I mean, you, they took out, it takes out a lot of things in the second one, in my opinion. If you look at what's crossed out in the first policy, it's by college, that the property owned or leased by Joliet Junior College shall be used. And what's crossed out is by college employees and the performance of assigned job duties and responsibilities. And it was changed for, for community college purposes. Opening that up to where that sale and disposal, in my opinion, could be used as long as it's not for community college purposes. It's opening it up. So what do you like about the second policy? What do you want to grow?
So all I'm asking is, in my summary, is to take it back to the Policy Committee. The authority of the decision stays with the Board. But for instance, on the second one, item number two, staff and faculty can request items. That's striked on the first one. I just want you guys to take a look and combine what's right between the two policies. It's not one or the other. It's, let's combine them to get the policy correct.
Do we all have a consensus that we would like it to stay with Matt from building auxiliary services and not go to the Vice President of Financial Services for methods of disposal? In my original report, I explained that Matt is intimately involved with every part of building and grounds. You're on building and grounds with him. He knows this building. He knows if something's wrong with that, with that equipment. Not the person that's sitting up in the office in Finance who's just looking at it on a piece of paper.
I will caution us, though, that that's getting into operations and those people report up through their chain of command to Dr. Namuo. We can't assign responsibility to anyone in this room other than Dr. Namuo. I understand what you're saying, but we have to let that sort of work itself out through the administration. We can't just point to any member in this room and give them a responsibility through a policy.
So you want that taken out altogether?
I'm not certain we have to take it out. That's why we're asking you guys to go back to the Policy Committee and take a look at it.
Okay.
Again, we're not asked, we don't even necessarily want the first one changed or the existing one changed. But it's an opportune time to look at both policies. You have some strong feelings in what you have in yours. You have some strong, they could both be right. So let's put them into one policy and put, you know, a sound policy together. Your biggest concern is the Board not having authority to release items. I'm sorry.
My, my second biggest concern is that it stays with Matt, who knows and not goes up to Finance.
But again, Matt can be gone or assume other assignments within his organization. And that's something we can't control. Now we have a policy. So Matt decides he becomes an EVP someday and he has to still keep track of, you know, as an example. I'm sorry, I don't mean to replace you. But, you know, you can't, you can't restrict his upward movement by giving him a policy that restricts, you know, what he does.
In this policy, I just, it already had names and had already been the Senior Director of Business and Auxiliary Services. They crossed that out and put in Vice President of Finance and Administrative Services. So do you want number, so are we discussing that number one should not even be there at all for methods of disposal and let the college deal with that procedurally?
We trust the work of the Policy Committee. I'm asking you to take policy, the two policies presented, back to your Committee and you guys work them. I don't need to add six people to the Policy Committee at this point.
Okay.
Can I ask one question too? I know you're going back to the Policy Committee, but I know that you said Brian is doing changes. What did, has Brian recommended anything? Because it looks like you may have added or subtracted, so can we get?
So from what I understand, every policy, once the Policy Committee agrees on a policy, it's then given to Brian to review. I'm not sure how that works.
We technically try to make sure that he's able to review it. And we make modifications as needed, but he does take a look to make sure that it's compliant with everything that we're supposed to be doing. But we do provide feedback based on requests or modifications that we want on the actual policy based on the recommendations that are already in place.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
So has any of this verbiage been looked at by you then? Let's go, that's back and forth for both of them?
Yes, it is. And I did want to make a comment to Trustee Lee that where you see for college purposes, that's directly out of the state statute.
Yep.
Those are changes that I made because that's how it's phrased within the state statute.
Okay, so that one was, no, so that one was.
And talk about some of it.
Yep.
Because the, the personal property thing, that's carried throughout based on the definition in the first sentence. But I'm happy to work with them.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and take it back.
And we, Trustee Morales, you asked for some input?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so policy 4.1.2A, I think the way that is presented is what I'm kind of leaning more towards at this point because of the forensic audit that Trustee Broderick brought up just a few minutes ago. And B, it's, it would only allow us to see once the damages are done. It's after the fact. One recommendation I would say is that, I know Trustee Lee mentioned a gentleman by the name of Matt whose title is Senior Director of Business and Auxiliary Services. And the title is what's important here. So the person in that seat would have direct oversight. But in B, it adds the Vice President of Finance. I don't have a concern with adding the VP of Finance to that, but I think the oversight should remain primarily with the Senior Director of Business and Auxiliary Services. So currently, if we could maybe change that and keep it more looking like the way it does in the A version of this policy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So the summary is, it's going back to the Committee and you guys will rework combining the two?
Yes.
The best parts of both.
Sounds like a plan.
We're saying, don't change anything, but we want everything fixed.
Small, small project. Okay, thank you.
I just like to say thank you for answering my question. I was wondering what the problems were or if there were any in A.
So the Policy Committee has a schedule to review policies on a scheduled basis.
Correct.
So that's why some policies that may not be broke still come up for review. And there may be cases that we have to review them anyway. That's just a cycle they're going to go through. Not necessarily on their table because it's broken, it's because it's scheduled to be reviewed.
I understand.
And quite honestly, most of those were put in place before any of us were on the Board, so.
Yeah.
Chair Bazinski, before you move on in the agenda, can I talk about some new business?
Yes, is there still a new business? Yes.
Okay. Chairman Bazinski and fellow trustees, I come before you today in defense of Board Policy 1.3 that outlines the standards we are called to follow as trustees of Joliet Junior College. The Trustee Code of Conduct expects us to put college interest ahead of our own, to resist undue influence, to respect the line between policy governance and the operations of the college, and to work with fellow Board members and the college president with civility and in a spirit of harmony, mutual respect, and cooperation. Tonight, I make a motion to censure Maureen Broderick for the repeated violations to the Trustee Code of Conduct outlined in Policy 1.3. I have, I wasn't really sure how to go about this. So I'm going to go from the most recent offenses and then I'm going to go backwards. I motion to censure, member, trustee Maureen Broderick for making negative comments about our JJC president to another community college president in November or at the ACCT conference in February of 2024 in violation of Policy 01.03.00, Trustee Code of Conduct. I have them, if you would like me to pass out the Code of Conduct.
It's not on the agenda.
Second.
We can call for discussion.
We can discuss, discussion? So.
Trustee Broderick.
I don't see it on the agenda.
Right.
I looked up censuring and it said I can do it. From what I understand and what I looked up in open meetings and from Robert Rules of Order, I can make a motion to censure at any point in time. It does not have to be on the agenda. That's my understanding of Robert's Rules of Orders.
So this Board is governed by both the Illinois Open Meetings Act as well as the Robert's Rules of Order, as well as Board Policy. So you have to look at all of those. Illinois Open Meetings Act requires that any final action to be taken on, I believe it's an ordinance or a resolution, has to be on the agenda. I don't believe policy speaks to anything related to this that I can recall. And I know that the Open Meeting Act also allows for consideration of items that are not on the agenda by the Board. So if this is not a resolution, if this is not an ordinance and it's under new business, I think it can be considered by the Board.
So then I, there is a motion and a second. I will again read my motion made to censure Maureen Broderick for making disparaging comments about our JJC president Namuo at the ACCT conference in February of 2024, just this last week, in violation of Policy 01.03.00, Trustee Code of Conduct. And Alicia seconded it, so it is now open for discussion if anyone would, else would like to say anything.
Anyone want to add to discussion?
Well, as a Board, we really need to put our trust in Dr. Namuo. And it's, it's, it's very, 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 very disturbing that we're making disparaging comments about JJC at all, so. I agree, it's got to be censured.
Sadly, when you go to a conference and you're sitting there as a trustee, as a JJC trustee, and you are told by your president that you are barred because the Chair told him that you could not go to the Capitol, and I'm supposed to call the Chair to ask him if I can go to the Capitol. I'm sitting with people asking me why I'm not at the Capitol. That's a disparaging part of the whole thing. It's the facts. The facts was, the Chair decided not to let me be an elected official or go to the Capitol. I wasn't part of the team as I was described. I was promised documentation, which I did not receive, that I was promised on three occasions. And then finally told at the luncheon, as I sat there and asked about it, that I'm not part of the team. Any trustee is allowed to go to the National Legislative Summit.
Yes, they're allowed to, but you had no travel budget. We discussed this multiple times, that the travel budget prohibited you from going anywhere. You went to an event. We weren't registered. You basically crashed a gate. The ACCT has now this week notified us that they're billing us for your attendance that you never registered for. You just showed up and expected to go see legislators. You'd let, or you expected to be part of his group representing the college. The negative light brought to this campus was by you showing up unannounced, unregistered, and expecting benefits we did not pay for, that were not covered by our budget, that you decided to on your own after multiple conversations. You didn't go because, and you and I had this conversation multiple times. I didn't go because there was no room in the budget for me to go either. You went on your, you went on your own. You shouldn't be reimbursed for a cost. You violated state statute by incurring bills for this college.
I did not.
You did. We just got billed for your attendance there. This week, we received a bill that was not authorized by this Board. So what Michelle has said is all true. You were there and your negative comments when they asked, why are you there and not representing JJC? What did you tell them?
I said I was representing JJC.
But you weren't.
I was too. I am there as a trustee first.
You went as the ICCTA president.
No, I went there as a JJC trustee that was elected to the ICCTA president position.
Those are two separate roles.
Those are a combined role because.
Those are two separate roles.
No, you can't be an ICCTA president unless you're a JJC trustee.
The ICCTA president does not represent this college in the National Legislative Summit.
Everything that is identified, when we went to see Senator Duckworth and Durbin, I introduced everybody to them. And you know, the funny thing was, when I introduced and said everything to everybody, I introduced myself as first, yes, the president, since that was what I was there for. But I also said, I'm also the JJC trustee. And they all, without a doubt, and I'm sure that Michelle, Ayesha, Kelly, and Dr. Namuo will know that they said, the first community college, because I always say that.
The point is, you had no money in the budget. You decided on your own to go. You went to the seminars, right past registration without ever registering, paying. Did you register when you got there?
I did not have to register. I went in and said as a guest.
Then why did they bill us?
They billed you because Ji-Hang got upset about it.
Okay, so again, you brought negative light to this campus by your behavior. That is what the censured vote is discussing. The continuous behavior of a trustee that brings negative light to Dr. Namuo. He did not belong in DC answering questions about your behavior.
I did not deserve to be treated not like a trustee. I am first a trustee.
Okay, but.
Can I please, I am the ICCTA representative.
No, I disagree with you on that. Look at the pieces that I gave you. Exhibit it.
I am not looking at the pieces. You got, we, no, 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 no.
Can I call a point of order because I'm the one who made the motion to censure her? And can we?
Vote.
Either Nancy wants to speak and I.
Discussion should be allowed for our Board Policy for the time allotted.
But in an organized manner. Thank you. Thank you for recognizing. So I do want to just mention the model standards of good practice as a reminder for us all. And again, at any time that we're in any community event, out in the public, we are representing JJC. So our behavior, any type of behavior that we have overall, is going to represent and either highlight our contributions to the community and being good stewards of the college or put a negative connotation to the role that we are trying to embody. So one of the things that I wanted to mention, again, as trustees, we're supposed to put the interests of the college before anything else, any personal matters. We're also supposed to be responsible for creating, maintaining a spirit of true cooperation and mutually supportive relationship with the CEO and Cabinet members. And making sure that we're trusting the leader's abilities, encouraging administration to share their successes, challenges, and major concerns regularly. And the last one, that this is going to be a major point that we need to keep in mind, and this is going to apply for this particular situation, is support a positive working relationship with other trustees and the president on and off campus. Trustees must address concerns with other trustees equitably and respectfully and understand the difference between policy development and administrative operational decisions. Anytime that we're doing things that are stepping away from the model standards of good practice, we are getting ourselves in trouble. So I do support that censure. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Trustee Morales has a comment.
Go ahead, Trustee Morales.
I've been on this Board for over eight years. Personally, I've been bullied by Trustee Broderick. She has not created a harmonious working environment for me as a trustee, which has caused me many, many, many years of stress. Times where I didn't think I can even continue volunteering my time to this Board, but I decided to run again. And I'm, I don't regret that decision because this Board needs good people on this Board. And we worked very hard to have Dr. Namuo here. He is an asset to us. Anybody that is going to go and. Anybody that is going to go and make disparaging comments about our president or about our school should, if you're not happy, you need to resign and step down. But going to other professionals, other influential people in the community, other elected officials, and speaking poorly of our president or our school is unacceptable, and I support the censure as well.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a comment. Now that everything has come to public notice, I think before we censure trustee Broderick, this should be an official warning, and from this point on, handle it accordingly. But I think this should be official warning now that all.
Diane, that will not work.
Well, I'm just stating my stand.
Any other discussion? Karen, can you call the vote?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Chairman, I would like to motion to make another censure for Maureen Broderick for making negative comments about our JJC board chair at the ACCT conference in February 2024 in violation of policy oh one point oh three point oh oh trustee code of conduct.
Second.
This is really ridiculous, guys. This is really ridiculous.
I will make one comment again, and I will say this every single time, actually. I have one comment for every for every single one of these. I believe that it is important for our community within our district and across the state and nationally to know that we do not support elected officials who repeatedly show a pattern of disregard and violation for policies that are meant to protect our community.
So it's all right to deny an elected officials to go to a function that any elected officials can go to, that any elected officials can go to.
Not if you've expended your entire travel budget already.
Well, the travel budget's an issue that we're going to bring in, we're going to have to discuss because I did give you an exhibit A that shows the travel expense.
Are we on point of order?
That will be later.
The travel budget is not at issue here.
No.
And please let trustee Broderick.
Fine.
Not discussion. We're good to vote unless there's anything.
We have to allow the discussion.
When I went to the, I think it was the ACCT training down in Bloomington for new trustees, a lot of this did come up, just what we're discussing. And what they explained is if it had not been brought to the public, if everything has been sidebar conversations and whispering and that kind of thing, that it has to be brought forth and the person or the trustee that's involved should be warned before an official censure. So that's why I made that decision to state it that way. And I'll state it again for the second censure. I do feel terrible that some of the things have happened and but based on, I guess, the ACCT standards, that if it's brought forth for the first, I guess you could call it the first hearing, that they should be warned. So that's my stand.
So Diane, basically, the first censure was a warning, so this time she's been warned already.
No, I haven't, not according to you.
I'm sorry, Alicia, are you speaking of the first censure was the warning and then now the second one here in the same meeting?
Yes, correct. This behavior, she's aware of this behavior, it's been brought to her attention in in other closed session meetings.
But those were closed session meetings, not public.
I would caution the board not to be making comments about what has been discussed in closed sessions.
Yes, and I think what she meant is the censure wasn't tonight. She's been censured in the past is what she means.
Yes, Alicia was the one that decided to censure me. You then said that censure was not did not make any sense, which it didn't.
I'm not commenting on your, I'm just saying, she's referencing that you've been censured before, there was your warning, is where I was going in her response to Diane. So it wasn't the first censure tonight, it was the first censure of her, which was in the past. So that's what.
Which was years ago.
It doesn't matter. Trustee Morales is using that as an example that the warning exists, the behavior had been noted before. That's what she's asking about.
And and it had been public publicly.
It was a public censure, yes.
That was back in 2021.
Before my time. Thank you.
Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Karen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Epstein.
Epstein.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Chair, I would like to make another motion to censure Maureen Broderick for making negative comments about other JJC trustees at the ACCT conference in February 2024 in violation of policy oh one point oh three point oh oh trustee code of conduct.
So move. Second.
For discussion, I am going to repeat this again. It is important for our community within our district, across the state, and nationally to know that we do not support elected officials who repeatedly show a pattern of disregard and violation for policies that are meant to protect our community.
Any further discussion? Karen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Chairman, I would like to make another motion to censure Maureen Broderick for super superficially, dear Lord Jesus, reviewing and taking photographs of another trustee's itinerary and travel information for the February 2024 ACCT conference in violation of policy oh one point oh three point oh oh trustee code of conduct.
Second.
The promise that was made by our president and by our executive director, one of our executive directors, was that I would get a package. I was told I would get that. Then I was told I would get it at the hotel. Then I was told I would get it before the meeting. Three promises that I now commit as lying to me. All I did was go through and take pictures of this booklet to find out what the itinerary was, so I'd know what the itinerary was. I didn't look at any of your personal stuff, but you left the folder, and I'm normally used to getting a folder that tells me what the different things are. So yes, I did take that.
I would just like to make it known to the public that in our last board retreat, Wednesday, February.
January 31st.
January 31st, that we came here, we had, I, there was a folder sat right here for me because I am the ICCTA rep, for information for me to go to DC that I had a meeting with Karen Kissel on Friday morning with. At that meeting, I fell, I bled through the entire meeting and went and got a Band-Aid, and everyone closed without me while I was in the back and they closed. Maureen took the folder that was sat in front of my desk, took pictures, and it's on camera, if you would like me to play the video, we can play that in open session if anybody, a public comment, please come request to play the video, of her taking pictures of my personal travel information. I already feel harassed by this woman, so the fact that she's going through my personal information and taking pictures of my travel information is just a complete violation of privacy. Not only that, but the folder was found underneath the table, underneath the table. That is prohibiting me from doing my job as a trustee at that point in time. So I just want everyone to sit there and think about if you were violated in that way by a fellow trustee or by a fellow, somebody comes into your office and goes through your things and takes pictures of your things.
It was pictures of the book.
It was my folder in front of my desk. I think it is important for our community within our district and across the state and nationally to know that we do not support elected officials who repeatedly show a pattern of disregard and violation for policies that are meant to protect our community.
And it's good that I shouldn't have been lied to by any of these executives that did lie to me about getting a package.
Um, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did you ask for a packet directly to an individual?
Yes, twice that night I did. Did you ask me to take pictures of my stuff? You were gone. I didn't.
I would expect that when we're here, just as I have laptops, personal documents, and personal folders, that it's protected from somebody else on this board coming to my personal documents and taking pictures.
Okay, Tim, I was wrong in doing it. It was sitting on there, it was a black folder, it had nothing of name on it. I opened it up and I saw what it was.
But you knew that it didn't belong to you. It didn't belong to you. It doesn't matter what's wrong is wrong and what's right is right. We're not going to call the executive board liars because you have no credibility. So can we please move forward?
The video shows you going through and pulling out Michelle's individual documents and taking pictures of it. You told me, no, that's not what you took pictures of.
That's what I took pictures of, it's on my phone.
We have it on video. You were on, this room's got how many cameras in it? You're on video going through her documents and doing one of these things and then taking pictures of them. So you can't tell me you were flipping through the laminated sheets. That's just simply not true.
Whatever, this is a Maureen destroy night, so whatever, have fun with it.
No, this is the board trying to bring us back to proper behavior, and we are so far off right now, so.
We are.
And it's related to one trustee, so.
Bad board member.
Any discussion?
No. No.
Trustee Morales?
No discussion. I say we move forward with the vote.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Chair Bazinski, I'd like to make another censure for Maureen Broderick for making disparaging comments about JJC president to another community college president in November of 2023 in violation of policy oh one point oh three point oh oh trustee code of conduct.
Second.
For discussion, I would just like to say that there are so many instances where she has made disparaging comments. The reason we are here tonight is because this has been months and months and months of her making disparaging comments about President Namuwa, Chair Bazinski, and other trustees on this board, and I will no longer stand here and tolerate it again. It is important for our community within our district, across the state, and nationally to know that we do not support elected officials who repeatedly show a pattern of disregard and violation for policies that are meant to protect our community.
And let's go back to the reason why I talked to the mentor, because there were concerns that I had, and we are allowed to go and talk to the mentor. The mentor was identified, and I was told to talk to the mentor, of which I did for recommendations. She then pursued talking to the president, our president, and acknowledged that I talked to him. It was no secret. It was what we are allowed to do. But being that you guys do not have the experience level, that's what we are, that's what mentors are assigned for. Mentors are assigned to new presidents so that if there's any concern that comes up, we are allowed to engage and talk to them.
I would ask if you ever had a concern about your president, that you'd come back to this board with that concern, utilize the yearly evaluation we have for him, reach out to a chair, reach out to somebody in this room, not go to the president of another college and give disparaging remarks about him. I don't care if it was a mentor or not. If I have a mentor for my performance, it doesn't give anyone else rights to go to my mentor and object to my performance. The way you used her was completely incorrect, and if you got guidance that said otherwise, it was wrong. You can't go to some, it's actually one of his peers. That is just so wrong to reach out to somebody else to tell them that you're president, whatever you had told her, it's just wrong.
I had shared with her my concerns that I had and my concerns of the stress. I asked her for support in talking to him to mend things up, and that's what I did, and that's what I was recommended to do. And that's based on the experience level of all the past chairs that have been on the executive grouping of the alumni community college group. They all said, you're supposed to be talking to the mentor.
I've never heard that before. I don't even know who his mentors are. That's never been shared with this board.
How, that's exactly my thought.
So the fact that he even has a mentor is none of my business. That's a mentor for him to use in his own personal development.
The president of this college reports to this board, not to a mentor. So any concerns, Maureen should have been brought to the chair or the vice chair.
Well, after the October 15th meeting, in which there were things that happened in executive session, and I will not identify that, I went to talk to Dr. Namuwa after the meeting, and I had asked for a meeting and he refused the meeting. And he basically called me quite a few names that were not appropriate for a professional manner. So yes, I did go to the mentor.
So we're lying now? We're just going to sit here and lie? That's what we're doing?
Pardon me?
We're going to sit here and lie now because that didn't happen? I was standing right there, that never happened.
You were not, our attorney was there.
You can't tell me where I was standing.
You were in the office?
I was standing right there. I heard you, and you weren't talking, you were yelling.
I was not yelling.
You were yelling, I heard you.
Brian, was I yelling?
What do I have to lie for?
I was crying if anything else.
You were not crying, you went in there and you yelled.
As a reminder, we're not having cross talk. If trustee Ellis turned to share her point of view, we're not having this conversation across the board.
Go ahead.
As I stated, there wasn't a conversation. I was standing right by the door at the time, you were yelling, and we're not going to say he called you any names or any anything like that. We're not going to talk about his integrity and act like he's something or he'd do something that he hasn't. Out of everyone on this board right now, I probably see him the most, and I don't care if I'm a student or not, from what I've seen from him, what you're saying has, it's not true. And we're not going to sit here and make up a narrative to support our own, whatever you're trying to do. That's not what we're doing. It doesn't matter, you did what you did.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a vote. Yeah, are we, are we ready to vote?
Are we ready to vote? Any other discussion?
Nope. Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris? Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for a vote. I'm sorry. Hang on, sorry. All those in favor to adjourn? No.
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 The question is all in favor. If you're in favor, you say aye, then you will be asked if you are not in favor, and if you are not in favor, you can say aye or some other sign. Thank you.
All those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Chairman, I make a motion to censure Maureen Broderick for confronting JJC. Chairman, I make a motion to censure Maureen Broderick for confronting JJC employees on various operational issues in November of 2023 in violation with policy 01.03.00 trustee code of conduct and policy 01.01.01.01 governance and administration.
Second.
What are you referring to? This is all coming out of executive session to all those reasons.
Oh, you can't say that. Just because we on this board know what we talked about and know what's going on doesn't mean I don't have to explain anything further. I'm going to continue to repeat what I've been repeating because now I am trying, I have covered the president, I have covered the chair for the disparaging comments, I have covered some of the other trustees, Morales and anybody else who has been targeted by you, and now I am covering the employees. So it is important for our community within our district, across the state and nationally to know that we do not support elected officials who repeatedly show a pattern of disregard and violation for policies that are meant to protect our community.
I did not do it.
I have no comment, but my vote is yes if we're taken at all.
Not yet. If there's no further discussion, call the vote.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Epstein.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chair Bazinski, I would like to make another motion to censure Maureen Broderick for attempting to benefit another individual apart from the total interest of the college when confronting JJC president in August of 2023 to advance a particular candidate for a job at JJC and violation of policy 01.03.00 trustee code of conduct.
Need a second? Discussion?
All I did was ask why someone had not been contacted for an interview. I didn't push anything. I asked what the particulars were, and apparently the whole thing is out of perspective because there was nothing other than somebody had submitted their candidacy for a position. I found out that that person hadn't been notified. It was over two months. I just asked what the particulars were.
If my president comes to me and confides in me that he is feeling harassed or feels I am going to support my president, so therefore I support this censure.
How many censures do you want to do to me tonight?
I'm going to go, you know, I was trying to, I told you, I was trying to figure out how to do this, but see, I decided to go from the most recent, and now we're going to go back until anything that I can remember because you need to be held accountable for all of your actions, Maureen. And if I can figure out more from when I went back here, I only went back to September of 2023. So if I figure out anymore, we might be here again next month.
Well, you better have it on the agenda because when you censured me last time, Brian, just so you know, they had to have it on the agenda so that the person was at least aware of it. I'm not aware of any of this stuff, and this is so distorted, it's horrendous. And we're making the board look like idiots. Everybody up here looks like an idiot.
I don't think so.
It's inclusive. I have never seen a meeting like this in my life.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Trustee Morales, I can't see you shaking your head.
No discussion. I'm ready to vote.
Karen, can you call the vote, please?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Epstein.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to censure Maureen Broderick for making negative comments about our JJC president, Namuwa, at the ICCCA conference in September of 2023 in violation of policy 01.03.00 trustee code of conduct.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to censure Maureen Broderick for making negative comments about our JJC president, Namuwa, at the ICCCA conference in September of 2023 in violation of policy 01.03.00.
Second.
This is just going, again, I'm just setting a history and a precedent for how many times this has happened and how much Dr. Namuwa has been dealing with.
My concern is just the accumulation of damage to his reputation.
Your reputation and mine as well.
Well, I'm discussing Dr. Namuwa's reputation, how much we have destroyed him by letting his behavior continue. He has two headwinds, weather here that he's not used to and the behavior of board. Neither, he shouldn't be fighting one of them.
Agreed.
Any other discussion?
I would like to say that I'm sorry for what's happening here tonight, but I will say that I think Dr. Namuwa's character can stand for itself regardless of what anyone says about him. That's what I feel, and I've only been here, well, you know, the election, and that's what I feel, so.
I agree with trustee Harris. I think Dr. Namuwa's integrity is complete, and in such a short amount of time to have him deal with this type of harassment is unfair and unwarranted and completely uncalled for and unprofessional.
And quickly, I agree because we got our one employee, and I want to protect his best interest because I think he's doing a wonderful job, so I wanted to maintain that he's here, so. Apologize to everyone that has to sit through this tonight, so.
Any other comments? Ready to vote?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Epstein.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman, I would like to censure Maureen Broderick for making negative comments about our JJC board chair at the ICCCA conference in September in violation of policy 01.03.00 trustee code of conduct.
Second.
Again, for discussion, I am just showing the history of how many times this has happened and how long this has been going on.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, and I want to say too, for the future, we all have to be very careful about hearsay, and if we were not in that conversation, we have to be careful. So I just want to put that out there for everyone. Not saying that it has not happened, but just in the future, because it's very sensitive, and it's unfortunate that we had to bring it here tonight. But again, everybody's character will speak for itself.
Yes. Any other discussion?
Nope.
No, it's just a personality attack, so you guys are attacking. Guns loaded.
This is not what this is.
This is a total embarrassment to the whole board.
It's my turn to speak, so please respect my space.
I just said that, sorry.
Thank you. This is holding people accountable to their actions or lack of integrity, so that's all I'm going to say, so we'll go ahead and continue. Thank you.
Karen, can you call the vote?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to censure Maureen Broderick for making negative comments about other JJC trustees at the ICCCA conference in September of 2023 in violation with policy 01.03.00 trustee code of conduct. Again, this is just showing a pattern of history and to show that we, the board, do not support this type of behavior of talking down about our fellow chair, our fellow president, or our other fellow trustees and spreading rumors and disparaging things about them.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do. It's a shame, Michelle, because I had people come up complaining at that meeting, and I didn't share everything that came up at that meeting, but your attire, the, I know several people have said something in regards to the aroma, which smelled of marijuana. I didn't share that.
Trustee Broderick, that's not germane to the motion. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, she's saying that I said things. There are things that were said that I never said, and I took back what they said, and that's what was shared with the chair.
You didn't say it then, but you said it now, Maureen, and that's the manipulative disparaging comments that you have a pattern of constantly doing to us as trustees in public with other professionals.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Karen, can you call the vote?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman Bazinski, I'd like to make a motion to censure Maureen Broderick for using college staff and resources for her personal benefit by having staff make copies of personal documents for her in August of 2023 in violation of policy 01.03.00 trustee code of conduct.
Second.
Again, this is just to show a pattern of the type of behavior that our college, our staff has been dealing with, and I am just trying to, again, support our staff and let you know we see the behavior and we do not agree with it.
Once again, I was in the office to see Dr. Namuwa. He was gone that afternoon. I casually asked to have one copy made of something that Karen wasn't there, so I said, do you mind? It wasn't where I insisted, it just said, do you mind? If she said, yes, I can't, I would have walked away with it. But now I'm being harassed for the fact that she made a copy? This is blowing my mind, guys, because when we had Joan here, and you guys are new, so I'm looking at the level of inexperience that's coming up with these things that you're censuring me for. I didn't do anything wrong. I just said, if you wouldn't mind, and she said, no, I can do it. If she said, I can't, I would have said, fine.
Experience has nothing to do with our behavior in public. It is a pattern we see constantly. That is what a lot of this is. It's bullying staff. If she would have said no, you would have bullied her.
I would not have bullied her.
We've seen it, Maureen.
No, I wouldn't have, Jim. I would have said, okay, thank you.
Right. It doesn't matter because you asked her to do personal work on college time, and that's what the censure vote is for.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Karen, can you call the vote, please?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Epstein.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman Bazinski, I'd like to make a censure, or a motion to censure Maureen Broderick for breaching confidentiality by disclosing executive session information to third parties in September of 2023 in violation of policy 01.03.00 trustee code of conduct.
Second.
I did not breach.
To be specific, she was outside in the hallway, and I was getting on the elevator, and she was talking to someone about somebody, something we had just got, not in a closed session about, so, I mean, you could take my word or her word for it if you want to, and it's not the first time that it's happened, and it also came from community members, so I'm just going to let you know that it definitely is personally coming from me. I definitely heard her divulging information that came from closed session in the hallway as I was getting on the elevator, and she was by the bathroom.
You have no clue who I was talking to at all?
You weren't talking to any of us because we were all in here, so.
And you had no idea?
You were divulging it to somebody who was not in this board meeting.
I did not.
Okay.
If I could, as part of the discussion here, this is trustee Morales. A former college president had informed me that they were aware that trustee Broderick had given, had given information out from executive session to college staff, and this came from a former president.
No.
Karen, can you call the vote, please?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman Bazinski, I'd like to make a motion to censure Maureen Broderick for unprofessional confrontation of a JJC foundation executive board member in September of 2023 and making what was perceived by that executive board member to be a threat in violation of policy 01.03.00 trustee code of conduct.
Second.
That foundation member, Donna Immer, is the one who was all over social media, making all kinds of negative comments and spewing it out all over social media about me and JJC. And I said to her at the 50th anniversary, Donna, we need to talk. We are not through with this discussion. That was this discussion, and that's how it was.
When you are in a position of power, you need to be very careful. Being on this board is a position of power, and it should be treated in the most highest way, and instead of using that power that you have to uplift people and to be there for your community, you use that power to make another community member feel threatened. And the fact that you can't even understand that your position can be a threat to someone, and you, I think you very well understand that, Maureen.
I was defending what she was putting out there on social media. I have a right to say something to her that she personally said to me, that I personally came back and disagreed with what she said. I have a right to defend myself, Michelle. She said some pretty nasty things. And I think the foundation is aware, because I went to David Cesario, the director, the president of the foundation, and shared with him what she said. It was horrible. I had people sending me copies of what she put on the social media. That's not right for a foundation member to come after a trustee. I was only defending myself.
What people put on their social media is their freedom of speech. You cannot interfere with that, and there's a process. If you're concerned, you go to the president or the chair.
Yeah, I guess, Alicia, you should be aware of that, too, because I guess Scott Slocum slammed you on October 13th on what you put on social media, from what I understand from your meeting.
That's not part of this discussion.
No.
I'm not the one taking people's political stance. I'm getting a mugshot for it.
Again, that's not part of this discussion. Let's... Any other discussion regarding this censure vote? Nope.
Karen, can you call the vote?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Epstein.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.2, approval to provide financial support, registration and travel expenses for the in-state ICCCA events for trustee Broderick as the ICCCA president through June 30th of 2024, which such support not to exceed current ICCCA trustee organization travel usage budgeted amount. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I gave you guys exhibits that I want to put in the minutes. Exhibit A shows that under 91111 on the annual budget of the Board of Trustees, that we have $60,000 in their FY 2024 budget for travel and conference meetings under 550000. This is what was approved in our finance budget. It was not individually set up to be approved for the 3500. So this is what we approved when the budget came before us. Being that, as most schools, as I shared with you when I gave you the report last time, that showed at the 22 schools, that 21 of them are doing it with the full dollar amount, we don't have board action that showed where the 3500 came from. We don't have it showing on the budget, the expense side either. So right now, the budget is 60,000. So if we look at that, if we look at that, and we look at what's in the board book, this contradicts, because policy does not reflect this being set up. This is what we approved. We did not approve this, and basically, I am looking at this whole situation of budget issues regarding that I brought up the past four months. I think we should look at the fact that we have that money sitting in the account, and I do question, and I did ask the chair this, too. It shows 49,000, and we have 60, but there's 11,000, so I don't understand where the 11,000 is at. You said meetings or whatever menus.
I responded that to you in an email. I know you received it, because you responded to my response.
Yes.
We have a budget for all the food and meeting expenses for each meeting. I explained to you where that 11,000 is, so go on.
But I'm just asking.
But anyway, point of order, anyway, because this is not what this vote is for. This vote here is for trustee support of you being the ICCCA president.
And to take funds from the current ICCCA representative and allocate them to Maureen so that she can go and continue to go represent our college on these conferences, essentially.
And basically, I am a JJC trustee, elected into this position, but I go as the JJC trustee.
Again, this is just asking the board as to whether or not you support trustee Broderick as the ICCCA president.
I do not, especially with all the disparaging comments that are being made at all these conferences. If we're creating damages to the reputation and integrity of our staff, of our trustees and our president, then I absolutely do not support it, and I request that we do not provide any additional funding.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Well, I go as a JJC trustee, so you have to look at it in that light. I do go as a JJC trustee.
We have an ICCCA delegate from this board, and we also have an alternate from this board.
All trustees are allowed to go to these meetings.
You can pay for your own way.
This vote is to support you as the ICCCA president, not as a trustee. Expenses for trustee Broderick as the ICCCA president through June 30th of 2024. That's what this is for.
In light of all the censures? No.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So what this is saying is, the position that Maureen has as ICCCA, we no longer support that, or we no longer will provide funding for that.
The letter of support that they gave me, apparently, is that was the question up, because the letter of support came from the previous chair when I went from vice, and the vice chair normally, vice president goes into the president position, and that's what Dan knew it as. So I had the letter of that. That's why I was eligible to be chosen and elected as the vice president.
Again, Dan did not have the authority to bind this board to expenses without a board vote. That is what this is for, right here. Dan did not have the authority to allow you to go spend college money. The vote here is, and to answer your question, Diane, it's approval for financial support for her role as the ICCCA president. She is asking for additional funds to close out the year as the president through June 30th of 2024. That's what the motion is for. And I believe we have a second.
Yes.
Is there a cap on additional funds that she's looking for? I'm just trying to figure that out, too, so...
Not to exceed the ICCCA budget, so she would be taking funds from Diane and I's budget to go to these events so that she can attend them.
Jake, if you look at it, though, the way it's broken down in our board book was never approved. There is 60,000 that is out there. So there's a conflict of what is in the board book versus what is in the basis of the budget that we approved, which is 60,000.
I thought we already covered that that is not a part of this discussion, and I could defer to Karen Kissel, because that's not the case. If you would like, that's not, I don't think that should be allowed as a part of this discussion, but if we would like more information about that, maybe we can ask it under trustee comments and ask Karen Kissel more about that, but that's not accurate.
Again, the motion is whether to provide additional support for Maureen Broderick. That is what the motion in the second is for.
Well, this leaves trustee Lee and trustee Harris with a deficiency to attend future meetings?
There is still plenty of money left in there, because there's the March meeting, which is in Cankey Key, there's the Lobby Day in Springfield, and then the last meeting's in Bloomington, so there are three meetings that still are in need of attendance, but will not run the amount of what's left in the budget.
So it says through June 30th, 2024, and then after which?
She's no longer the ICCC president, so...
Well, it's also a new budget, too.
Right. And that's when they elect new officers with the ICCCA.
Yeah, again, this is relating to this year's budget. If they changed rules and had her run or be president for another year, it would still have to be, you know, brought up.
No, I become past president. I do not become president again.
If they were to have changed the rules, it wouldn't relate to this, because we'd still have to vote for next year's budget.
Anyone with 14 censures should not be allowed to go to anything representing our college.
Any other discussion?
Nope. Ready for a vote.
Can you call the vote?
Trustee Garcia again?
No.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Can you come back to me?
Pass.
Trustee Mahalik?
No.
Trustee Morales?
No.
Trustee Ellis?
No.
Trustee Bazinski?
No.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Motion's lost.
Item 4.3, approval to provide trustee Broderick with additional travel funds, the additional amount to be divided equally from each of the other elected trustees' travel budget funds to first cover trustee Broderick's current overage of $188.27, and any remainder to be used for registration at community engagement events or to reimburse travel incurred after February 14th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Anyone with 13 censures should not be allowed to represent our school at all.
I have a question about the bill that was just sent to us. Can I motion to amend that amount to include that bill?
Are we allowed to do that, Brian? So technically, we haven't, the bill came today, so with public notice and everything, I don't believe we can put funding in here for that, can we?
Well, you can make, you can amend the motion to be a certain amount, because it is, it's 188 plus any remainder, so there should be an amount attached to the motion, so you put on notice of $188.27, if you want to include that, you certainly can.
So I'll just amend the motion to include the ACCTA bill, and I don't know the amount of it unless we have it in front of us somewhere.
Chairman, I believe it's 575. It's an additional $575.
So can I, so do I motion and amend the whole amount, or do I just motion to amend to include the $575?
It's your choice. It's your choice.
I would like to motion to include the $575 from...
You need to make a motion to amend.
I mean, yes, sorry. Motion to amend 4.3 to include the $575 from the ACCT conference.
Then we need a second for that, the amended motion.
Second.
End discussion.
Yeah, I agree. We would ask that whoever seconded it the first time second this.
Okay, second.
Okay. So this is two parts. The additional amount to cover both current expenditures, the 188 in addition, we're adding to 575 to it, and then anything over that, any remainder to be used for registration at future community engagements, events, or to reimburse travel incurred after February 14th, 2024.
As I understand the motion, it's 188.27 plus 575.
And that's it?
As it stands right now.
Okay.
Any discussion?
So what will that do as far as on the other conferences that I go to? Because under 1.11 of our trustee development, it says all trustees have the opportunity to be able to go for trustee development. Those are trustee meetings.
You can pay for your own way.
We're not paid, Alicia. We are all volunteered, elected volunteers.
We all received a letter today that was asked to be kept between client confidential, what's the word?
Attorney-client privilege.
It's attorney-client privilege, but if you want to know what the law is, the law is that a trustee is not to be compensated for their service on the board, however, their expenses incurred for that service shall be paid by the board, or by the college. So if someone has to go to a conference to get their education that's mandated by the state statute, the board has to cover that, or the college has to cover that.
Whereas these conferences are not for education. We already went through that training, and that training will come, since that training is done for the year, this does not affect that year of 1, 3, and 5. She's already done that training. This is not mandatory training. This does not affect her and her ability to be a trustee. That is not what this is. She is still able to be a trustee. She will still be able to get the funding to go to the mandatory training that is required of us if she wins the next election.
Okay, let me, I want to bring this back to, attorney corrected me, the only motion right now is the 575 and the 188, not the future spending, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that is what the current motion is that we're discussing, not additional funding, so...
So is that 4.3 we're talking about, only part of that?
I'm sorry?
We're only talking about part of 4.3?
No, no, we're talking about the motion for 4.3 made by trustee Lee was the 188.27 plus the 575.
Oh, so we need to vote to add that to it? Is that what you're saying?
We did that.
Okay, so then...
There should be, there should be a vote on that motion to amend. If that's approved, then you vote on the motion.
Okay.
So any other discussions?
Anyone need clarity on what we're voting on?
We're voting on the motion...
To amend.
To amend.
To amend. The total.
The amended motion to include those two totals.
Correct.
But it doesn't cover any future expenses, correct? Even though the language is including of anything after February 14th.
Right, that will go back to the original motion.
Correct.
Where we go back.
So the amended motion is just to cover these two funds?
It's just to add the money.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Karen, can you call the vote?
Sorry.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
And now we discuss future events?
Well, now you decide whether or not you pass the motion. Motion's been amended, so now you're going to vote on whether or not you approve that amount of 575 plus 188.27 that you transferred to, or provided to cover the travel.
Okay, so we're voting whether to improve the dollar amount?
Correct.
Okay.
Plus future?
Well, yeah, because... It's just the 188.27 plus 575.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
I just, that's a total of 764, and if you divide it by...
27. 764.
764.27, and if you divide it by the other six elected trustees, it comes out to... It comes out to about $127.33 that each of the trustees would have to give from your accounts to cover that, and I do just want to point out that Diane Harris doesn't have...
She's 146.
No. This report isn't, as of today, she only has $86 left.
So, Michelle, can you amend your motion to have it equal from the remaining trustees besides trustee Harris and trustee Broderick?
Okay, so I, okay. Motion to amend, again, 4.3, to divide equally from Bazinski, Lee, Garcia again, Mahalik, Ellis, and Morales?
Not Ellis.
We don't take from this, okay? So let's do that again. Motion to amend to, for the amount to be divided equally from each of trustee Lee, Bazinski, Garcia again, Mahalik, and Morales.
Second.
And for the record, that's the 188.27 plus 575.
Correct.
Trustee Harris, do you second?
I do.
Thank you.
That would be $152.65 from everybody else's budget, except trustee Ellis and trustee Harris.
Now you get to vote on the motion to amend, and if you approve that, then you can vote on the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Me.
Trustee Lee. And who seconded it?
I did.
Dan, okay. Okay, trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again? No. Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
No.
Trustee Ellis?
No.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we're going to vote on the motion?
Now we can actually vote.
For clarity, now this is the future expenses we're voting on?
This, no, this is...
This is the whole 4.3.
This is actually voting on the motion that we've amended twice.
Okay.
So basically, the amendment is you're voting to give the money from the five trustees, the 188.27, plus covering the 575.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that needs a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Already a motion and a second on the table, okay.
A motion and a second? Oh. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, again?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
No.
Trustee Morales?
No.
Trustee Ellis?
No.
Trustee Bazinski?
No.
Motion fails.
Item 5, reports. 5.1, student trustee report, Ms. Ayesha Ellis.
Good evening, everyone. Starting off my report, I want to acknowledge our student athletes who have shown great initiative and community spirit. Our director of athletics, Gregory Braun, has launched a program called Paws on the Street, which connects JJC student athletes with community organizations. Our student athletes are engaging in various activities within the area, leaving a positive impact and contributing to the community. On Wednesday, January 31st, we celebrated the beginning of Black History Month with our first event of flag-raising ceremony and second-line parade. Students, staff, and many members of our campus community gathered at J Building and made our way outside of the A Building entrance to celebrate African-American history and culture. We shared the meaning of the Pan-African flag, the history of the second-line parade, and joined together for the Black National Anthem. We proudly watched, as the flag was raised, a powerful symbol that JJC recognizes and honors Black History Month and our culture. The Center of Multicultural Access and Success has organized a series of events to celebrate Black History Month. Last week, we had an African bazaar, which allowed us to support minority-owned businesses. Today, we visited the Dusabu African-American Museum. And on Friday, CMOS will be hosting the 12th Annual Black Teen Summit. This event is designed for high school students and will take place at JJC. The summit will provide students with a chance to learn about various opportunities available through higher education while engaging in dialogue about current educational topics. We also had another successful Main Street this semester. The 90s-themed Club Recruitment Fair had a total of 553 student contacts. And Main Street was held on our main campus, Romeoville and City Center. And if you're interested in the recap video, it was posted today on our social medias, JJC underscore OSA. Students within the Fine Arts Department are getting ready for the presentation of the musical Pirates of Penzance, a comedic opera. The show promises to be a hilarious affair and is suitable for families. Performances will be held Thursday, February 29th through Sunday, March 3rd. For more information regarding the show, please visit the college's website. Last week, I had the privilege of joining Dr. Muwul, Dee Kelly Rode Tonnelli, and trustee Lee in Washington, DC for the ACCT National Legislative Summit. During the summit, I had the opportunity to learn more about and advocate for various topics, some including workforce development programs and Pell Grants, the need for them to be more inclusive, increased, and not taxed. I appreciated our approach, which was to focus on what's been working and how students have benefited, how JJC has invested in students and the community. It was an honor to share my experiences in those of my peers. Initially, I was unsure of how much and impact my words would have, but I soon realized that every voice truly counts. During the conference, it was said that whether or not my generation wanted a seat at the table and to join the conversations, individuals are going to have, were going to have them and make decisions on our behalf. So we might as well grab a chair and join the conversation. During the National Legislative Summit, I also had the opportunity, as a member of the National Student Advisory Committee, to have a meeting. We spoke to the Department of, to the Department of Education Senior Advisor Jay Noah Brown and representatives from the Financial Literacy and Education Commission. We further discussed the need for education on financial literacy on our campuses and how the Financial Literacy and Education Commission could support students in being set up for long-term financial success. We also prepared for our visits to Capitol Hill with Dr. Lynn Tishner-Lander, the president and CEO of Phi Theta Kappa. And she left us with this quote, "If you are not at the table, then you're on the menu." Lastly, wrapping up my report, I would like to acknowledge my peer and friend, Alexandria Nance. Alex was a fellow participant in the Center of Multicultural Access and Success Trio Program and Black Student Union. She was extremely invested in her success as a student. In fact, it was nearly impossible to see her around campus not doing her schoolwork. Her LinkedIn account also focused on the fact that she was a JJC student and expected to graduate in 2024. The last time we spoke, she went on about how she was excited to graduate this semester and her plans after graduation. Alex is truly missed. Thank you, and are there any questions regarding my report? Thank you.
Item 5.2, representative to the JJC Foundation, Ms. Kristi Mulvey.
No report. Thank you.
Item 5.3, representative to the ICCTA, Ms. Michelle Lee.
All right, so this was my first time to DC for this trip. I've been to DC once before, but for this trip. And it was really amazing to actually be able to go and take information that we learned in the first day of the conference, as well as, I don't even know how to use this thing, as well as really be able to talk to our reps from our area and just get across our message of things that we need and see within our community. So some of the main things that we talked about were, for our legislative priorities, were to bolster the role of the community college in our workforce development, which supports workforce Pell Grants for students in short-term programs. That was a huge key thing for us, is trying to get those, the Pell Grants for shorter-term programs, as well as strengthening the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIOA. We also talked about funding key education and workforce programs through supporting student access and success, strengthening under-resourced institutions, and bolstering job training and career and technical education. I, myself, participated in one of our workforce grants when I was younger, and then from there ended up coming to JJC. So I definitely loved it. It taught, they taught us just very valuable skills, interviewing skills. Mock interviews were one of my favorite parts of that workforce program, really kind of hone in on some of those things, as well as resume skills and things like that. We also talked about and focused on our student tax policy on those who, and those who can benefit most. So really, we're talking about our Pell Grants and not taxing those, because community college students are the only ones who are basically being penalized for going to community college through the taxation of Pell Grants, because we are the only ones who, our students save money. So that was one of the things we told our legislation. If they could possibly do something about that, we really feel like that would help our students. And then the farm bill, of course, supporting rural community in colleges and increasing access to SNAP or making the requirements less. I know a lot of people who say they can't get it, you know, for maybe $5. So just really, food security is so important to our students, to have a full stomach. I mean, it is everything, to be able to concentrate and to be able to have a healthy lifestyle. Food is so important. So those were the main things that we kind of concentrated on for our community when we went and talked to our legislators.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5.4, trustee updates. Trustee Harris.
I don't have anything.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Broderick?
Hi, Jim. Can you pass on me till I find what I had written down?
Can you come back?
Please.
Trustee Garcia, again?
Thank you. No comments.
Trustee Mahalik?
No updates.
Trustee Morales?
Thank you so much. Just that this meeting has been very challenging and very difficult. I'm sorry that we had to have all of these courageous conversations, but it's necessary. And as probably one of the, I think, the second-most senior member on the board, this is a long overdue conversation that we needed to have with trustee Broderick. And I hope to see improvements in the behavior. That's all. Thank you.
Trustee Ellis?
No.
Trustee Broderick?
Well, one of the things, oh, here it is, that I was looking at, was can we go back to a board book? Where we don't get the expense of having this thing delivered to us now that it's in such short format? We used to have the board book, which was on our iPads. That was the reason we had the iPad, so that we didn't have to have this delivered to us. We then could look at everything on the board book and go through it. Do you remember that, Dr. Farmer? It was much more reasonable. We didn't have the expense of having our police staff going out to our homes to drop it off. So I'm asking that. And that way, then, we could see all of the bills of the revolving account in the board book. It wouldn't have to be emailed to us, it would be in the board book. And then I'm looking at the budget, which I pulled up the annual 2023-2024 budget. And I'd like to know, we have, as I said, $60,000 in the travel and conference meeting. There was no board approval, and I went through the past 12 months and 24 months, did not find anything regarding who set the amounts for the budget for each one of us, because it doesn't make any sense when we're going through and scrutinizing, and it keeps coming up and down. Because last year, and even though trustee Morales got 1,700 more, I don't care anymore about that she got 1,700 more, because it was built into the budget. And if our names aren't lined items on there, and it's only that we approve this, then we should be looking at this as a totality. And I'll bring that back to policy, that when you're writing the policy for this, that we need to look at those two things that were addressed in the letter in regards to two policies that relate to board chair and president, looking at that. Basically, it should be the CFO that looks at it. If she knows what's, if that person knows what's in that, and we're not overdoing ourselves, and we're doing it in alignment of what we are allowed to do, then it shouldn't go before the chair or the president. It should stick with the CFO. And the secretary should be able to set us up knowing. And we should also look at coming up with a policy that a lot of schools are doing in May, that they identify what each trustee wants to go to, and we assess the cost factors of where that, those conferences are at. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. And I do want that when we have any legislator on campus, that all of us are informed of that, so that we all know that a legislator's on campus. Because we've had Senator Duckworth and now Congressman Luhood. It would be nice just to know when they're there, instead of us seeing it on social media. Thank you.
Item 5.5, chairs' report. We are going to get out of here by 10:00, so I'm going to forego a report tonight. And I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
We're adjourned.